Do you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing, we have our invocation this evening by our police chaplain.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you, let's pray. Father God, we come before you with thankful hearts that we have a system that allows us to come peacefully together and where the decisions and plans can be put into place. God, I pray especially that today every voice and every vote would be done with integrity, that every heart would be filled with compassion, that every mind would be driven by what is true and what is right, and that every action would result in the betterment of our community, our citizens, our city council, and all the staff that supports them. Unite us together behind those things that count the most with you. God, that we will be one community that serves together, and that you would strengthen us and guide us in every matter that's before us this night. And we pray it in Jesus' name. Amen.
You may be seated. Madam City Attorney, I was going to ask whether there's anything to report out of closed session, but we'll wait for that for a moment. Let's go to special presentations. We have the Chamber of Commerce here that I believe is going to make a presentation. Come on down, Dave.
And Mayor, we do not have any part of the election.
Got it. You brought your fans.
I told them they each have 15 minutes. No, just kidding. Mr. Mayor and Council, Dave L.A., President and CEO of your Chamber of Commerce, and what we wanted to do tonight, something we've not done before, and I think Councilwoman Inglisius, it was your idea, for us to just kind of come in a few minutes to share what the council's doing. And so what I've done tonight is I've asked the leadership, we have four councils that work, that basically do all the work at the chamber, our Economic Development Council, our Community Engagement Council, our Government Affairs Council, and our Ambassadors Council. You should have one of these program guides. This is kind of all of our programs that we do during the course of the year fall into this. Chambers of Commerce are noted for being networking organizations. We're a networking organization, but really, the work that we do focuses on that community, that legislative advocacy, and that economic development scenario. So what I've done is just asked our folks that are the chairs of each of those councils to come and give you about a minute overview of the work that they're doing. So I want to start with our ambassadors, and they'll come up, they'll introduce themselves, who they are, the companies they represent, and give you just a quick overview of the work that they're doing in their specific area. Okay?
All right, ambassadors.
Hello, my name is Eric Basal, and I work for Goodwill of Orange County, and I'm the co-chair of our ambassador group. We have roughly 35 ambassadors, and it's really neat how we get out in the community. So when there's a new business that comes to Santa Ana, we deliver their plaque and we're the welcoming arm. We do our chamber lunches, and we use a local Santa Ana restaurant, so we get to try their food and also give them our business. Now, my regular job, I work for Goodwill, and I help people with disabilities find work, and I have to say that Santa Ana out of every city in Orange County employs the most people with a barrier, so for that, I thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is William Young, and I'm the owner and operator of Forever Young Memory Care. It's a care facility for seniors with dementia and Alzheimer's in Santa Ana, and I'm grateful to be here today to tell you how important the chamber is to me and what it's done for me ever since my family decided to be an entrepreneur and open up her own facility. On May 27, 2015, at my grand opening, I had more chamber members there supporting me at the grand opening than I had my own family. And to tell you, that was such a big day for me because it was me taking a leap into a passion. So when I look back at the people attended and seeing 19 people from the chamber supporting me, it meant the world to me. So I naturally wanted to give back, and like Dave said, it's about building community, but more so than that in doing business together, it's getting to meet people and finding out who they are as people, as a family man, as their household, and really what keeps them going. And those are the people that I want to do business with. So the Santa Ana Chamber is something else, and it's been a big part of my success and happiness. Thanks for letting us be here today.
So next will be our Economic Development Council.
Thank you. My name is Jonathan Mayer, I'm from Main Place Mall. I'm the co-chair of the Economic Development Council for the Chamber of Commerce for Santa Ana. Just want to share a few of the programs that the Economic Development Council is kind of working on. One of it is the retention program, where members of the chamber get out into the community and actually meet with local businesses, through all different sectors of business, to kind of understand the issues that face businesses that are operating in Santa Ana, and, you know, things that affect their, you know, needs for training, hiring needs, issues they face, you know, things like parking, homeless, graffiti, and be able to provide that information back to the city. We also do a couple of large events through the chamber. One is a Taste of Santa Ana, which is an economic development event that brings together not only the community, but also large businesses throughout Santa Ana and the greater Orange County area. Really, you know, Santa Ana has become on the map as one of the, you know, best dining destinations in Orange County, and we want to highlight that. And we highlight that by not only showcasing some of the larger restaurants, but a lot of the smaller restaurants that people don't know about, so we get together in a fun community event. And then we also host annually the GROW Conference, and GROW is Geography, Resources, Opportunity, and Workforce. This year, we'll be celebrating our sixth year, it's going to be in February of 2020. It's an outstanding event that really invites people to invest in Santa Ana from a development perspective or to bring new businesses to Santa Ana.
Next, our Community Engagement Council, which is our newest council.
Good evening, my name is Paula Garcia-Arsenal, and I'm a Vice President with Habitat for Humanity of Orange County. I'm going to go over just a couple of events that the Community Engagement Council does. We're very proud of our Difference Makers Event, that's our annual luncheon, we'll be celebrating our 10th year. That's where we honor one graduating senior from every high school in Santa Ana, and also Santa Ana College, and then a couple of the private high schools here. We also honor seven outstanding business community leaders on making a difference in Santa Ana. One of our other events that we have is our Annual Business Expo, and that's where we have over 40 different businesses and community that come out, and they get to network, enjoy an evening, and learn about the different businesses in our community.
Hello, my name is Richard Pores of AT&amp;T, I'm co-chair with Paula. One of the reasons we love the Difference Makers, both Paula and I are graduates from Santa Ana Unified, so we love to get involved in that program. A couple of other events that we do sponsor is the Vision Makers Breakfast, where we bring in outstanding leaders from the community. On September 19, we have Dr. Danielle Estrupa, President of Chapman University, will be there. And then for AT&amp;T, this is our 20th year that we'll be sponsoring the Santa Ana Chamber Golf Tournament, where we can help out the chamber, and we've also helped out High School Inc. through that program. Thank you very much.
And our final council is our Government Affairs Council, and also besides being a council member, Bill Urkey is the chairman of our board, and he's going to make some final comments.
Good evening, I'm Sharon Ellis, I'm the CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Orange County, and very pleased to be the co-chair of the Government Affairs Council for the Santa Ana Chamber. We hold monthly meetings where we discuss the items that are relevant to things that are going on here in Santa Ana, and we look at legislative issues and take positions on things for and against, as we look at how it will support the community of Santa Ana. Additionally, we hold individual meetings with every council member when they come on board to make sure that they have an appreciation of the work that we do at the chamber, and also to understand a little bit more about each council member. The other thing that we do is to hold the State of the City luncheon for the mayor, and this year, this event will be held on October 17, and will be at the Discovery Q. Additionally, we hold sessions, forums, when we have candidates who are running for office. So this year, we will be hosting the forum for the Ward Four Candidates for the City Council, and that will be September 25 at the Delhi Center. So there's a lot that goes on, and I think as we look at all of the government affairs events that happen throughout the year, the chamber becomes a good resource for not only discussing, but also analyzing information. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Again, my name is Bill Urkey, a partner at the law firm of Rutan and Tucker. I am the president through the end of this year of the chamber, and just wanted to provide a couple closing remarks. Again, thank you for giving us the time to do this short presentation. We have 450, approximately 450 member organizations who are with the chamber, and they run the gamut from the big international corporations to the locally grown, local retailers right down here in downtown Santa Ana. The main point I would like to leave all of you with, and this is for the council and for staff, is that we have an open door policy. We believe in that communication between our organization and yours. We have a very good working relationship with you and your staff, and if you have any ideas that you would like to bring to us, please do. On the other hand, if you would like to hear what our members are thinking about certain policy initiatives or ideas, by all means, please come knocking on our door. That's all I have for today. Again, thank you very much for giving us the time for this presentation, and enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Iglesias, do you have any comment? Want to thank the folks? I know you wanted them to come down.
Yeah, I just want to thank all of you for coming down and letting us know what you all are doing. I personally enjoy going to the ribbon cuttings with the ambassadors and welcoming the businesses into Santa Ana, and I believe, you know, your group and your chamber is the one that helps us facilitate that process. So you're, in a way, the ambassadors to the city personnel, because what, you know, what you guys are doing out there is welcoming them to us, knowing that, you know, many of us would want to go to those ribbon cuttings, but unfortunately, you know, time doesn't allow for us to be at all the ribbon cuttings, but I know you guys are there faithfully, and then you always send someone to represent. So you're representing, you know, the Santa Ana Chamber, but in a way, you're also representing the city of Santa Ana. And every time I go there, I know everyone's having great dialogue, great sharing of information, and I know you are our eyes, in a way, of what's going on in the business community. So I want to thank you for all the hard work that you guys have been doing.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations, keep up the good work. With that, the next presentation I'm going to handle is Allison Young here. There she is. Allison, this is a recognition of you and your service on the Santa Historical Preservation I know that you began working, I believe, back, when you moved here, back in 1992. You have a 1938 Mediterranean home, which is on the city's historic register. I know you were a board member from 1995 to 97, and also from 1997 to 2019. I know you helped restore the Hawaffle House, which I believe was, was it the first doctor in Santa Ana or the first female doctor?
First female doctor.
First female doctor. I know she had a horse and buggy, and it's still there, right? The Little Hordes Carriage House and all that is there. Also, you know, I know you've worked very hard. Says you recently resigned as president of the society after 22 years, and it says that they're not sure what you're going to do now.
I'm still volunteering here.
You're going to continue to volunteer, but in a different capacity. Well, look, for your recognition, I mean, for your years of service, what you've done for the community and all, Allison, I want to present you a proclamation, but prior to that, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Thank you so much. This is a great honor to be recognized by the city. I think 22 years as president of the society was long enough for me, but I am still, as I said, working with the society on other things. So I invite all of the community to come visit our two museums. We have the Dr. Will Elahawaffle House, which is right across from the old courthouse, and we also have the Santa Ana Fire Museum. And on alternate months, we have, on the first Saturday, open houses there, and we change themes, and the firehouse, you can see the firemen in action because it's an active fire station as well as a museum. And so I hope that you all, if you have not been to either of our museums, you feel free to come. Thank you.
Allison, this is a certificate of recognition awarded to you for your outstanding contributions to the community dated this third day of September 2019, and it's my privilege and pleasure to present it to you, and, you know, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
I know you hang out with people like Tim Russ, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Any other characters?
Oh, we've got a lot of characters.
So if you're a character and you want a home, Allison will be happy to welcome you, and you can be part of the historical society. Thank you very much, Allison.
Thank you so much.
Take care. Chamber guys, before you leave, come on up, they want a photo. So all of you, come on up, I'm going to hit the council, let's get the city manager involved because she's now part of everything. Come around, come over to the side, we'll get a big picture here. And we'll hold off with Councilmember Solario's presentation for just a moment.
Let's give our Chamber of Commerce another round of applause. You've been great partners a long time. So it's my honor to bring up Professor John Dombrink. One of the things about Santa Ana that is especially nice is that we are blessed with having colleges in our nearby areas. You know, we have Santa Ana College right here in Santa Ana, we have Cal State Fullerton not far away, and really, just down the street, we have UC Irvine. And, you know, what that offers to students in terms of accessibility to go to those institutions, or many ways that those institutions give back, the blessings that come from all that is pretty amazing. You know, through just, you know, the offerings and the generosity of one professor, you know, I'll give you a sense of how much they can offer, you know, to our city. Professor John Dombrink just retired from UCI, and to a certain extent, he's part of the reason why I'm standing here today. I, because of him, many years ago, did my first community service in Santa Ana at the Legal Aid Society, helping, you know, poor people that were ripped off by their employers, and we sought ways to get those individuals paid back, and we were largely successful. Professor Dombrink is an emeritus professor in the Department of Criminology Law Society in the School of Social Ecology at UC Irvine. He just recently retired this summer after teaching 37 years. And I would say you could tell by the color of his hair, but his hair's always been white. It's always been gray and white. I was fortunate enough to be a mentee of Professor Dombrink in the Social Ecology Mentor-Mentee Program, in which he was a faculty member and later a co-director. Professor Dombrink helped with many other departments and professors that offered volunteer and research services here in Santa Ana, but for example, he directed the Criminology Outreach Program, which brought teams of undergraduate students from UC Irvine to work with 7th through 12th grade classes in local schools on a weekly and bi-weekly basis. The mentors that were part of this engaged in small group lessons, teaching critical thinking, research, writing, oral presentations regarding the criminal justice system, et cetera. Speaking of criminology, I took one of his criminology classes, and it was rough because he forced me to read The Godfather and Goodfellas and a few other, you know, important literary works, and I learned a lot. Beneficiaries of the criminology program I mentioned included Century High School, Santa Ana High School, and Bia Fundamental Intermediate School and all their students. He also, over the years, because he's this great professor and mentor, he would send students to me, like when I was in assembly, and they'd become interns or fellows, you know, many of them got full-time jobs with me or with the state, and many of them are up there doing great things, and it's because also of your effort. And even just recently, you sent Edgar over, who's an outstanding student with Santa Ana roots. He obviously, Professor Dombrink, has had a profound personal impact on me, but really on a broader base of students, and I know those students will move on to do great things. So really, through the work of just one professor, he's made a positive impact for the lives of thousands of families. On behalf of a grateful city, we have a certificate, but also, you know, this year, we're celebrating our 150th anniversary, and we recently got these, they're kind of like challenge coins, but they're commemorative coins, and, you know, the city's been standing up 150 years. You haven't been here all those years, but, you know, for 25 years plus, you've given a lot to this community, and for that, the city is grateful, and I personally will ever be in appreciation. Thank you. Let's give him a round of applause.
You should never let a teacher near a microphone. I had a T-shirt when I came back to teaching last year, it said, "I'm a stroke survivor." So in case you think I had a drink on the way in just because, to make it through, no. We had passed a torch down, and when somebody says 37 years, you go like, wow, where'd that go? But Jose was a student in 1988, was a mentor the next year, 1989, was student by president during the LA riots, as he points out, and with each generation, the chance to give to him, people like Enrique Rojo, who works for Los Angeles Schools, and Lourdes Morales, who works in Sacramento for the Legislative Analyst Office, and now Mr. Espinoza, who went to Century High School. The idea to me of each passing on the torch to younger, bright children, and if you look at our schools, they're filled with people who are making their way up, opening the doors. So it's, for me, great to be associated with the students at these schools, and I'm optimistic about the future that they will create for us. Thanks.
So again, a certificate on behalf of a grateful city and many grateful students. Thank you and congratulations. And thank you to Maya, his, you know, his better half, who's done many great things as well for our community.
I am now going to go to the consent counter, but prior to that, I believe we have one request to speak, although Bruce Channing, do you want to speak on item 20B? Come on down and speak. Realize right now, I think there's support for your item, so speak at your own peril. Go ahead, Bruce.
Thank you, Mayor Polito. I am Bruce Channing, the executive director, recently appointed to the ACCOC, and as some of you know, 26 years as city manager in Laguna Hills. I take heed by your words, Mayor, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, you're a wise man.
Thank you.
Keep up the good job, and just be available, we might have a question, we might not.
Okay, I'm ready.
So far, I don't know if there's any requests over here to my right on people that want to pull items for discussions. Go ahead, which item is that?
That is 39A.
39A. To the left, are there any items, Councilmember Solario, that you wish to pull, or?
Don't think so.
Well, if not, then we only have one item. So, yeah.
Pressure's on.
Pressure's on. So why don't we vote on the balance first, and then we'll take the one item. I take, entertain a motion on the balance of the counter. Those in favor, please say aye. Well, let's press the green button. Jose, the one on the right. He has two sets of green buttons.
Mr. Mayor won't let me vote twice.
Yeah, I won't let him vote twice. If he were to vote twice, would it just appear another green one, or that white? So if you want to vote twice, it's up to you, but they'll only count one. All right, so with that, 39A, Councilmember Vincenzo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and this is very brief. This is on the approval of naming a park, the new park over on East Sixth Street, and I think there was two positions held by the two different commissions that oversaw this, so I think Parks and Rec wanted to call it Parque Mariposa, and the Planning Commission recommended the name to be Mariposa Park. So is there any way we can blend the two? I know we've done that at some other places where you call it Mariposa Park, and then we could do the Spanish translation underneath, if that's something that's physically possible? You know, that way, we embrace both because we know it's right in the middle of a very old neighborhood in Lacey, and so, you know, that's something that would accommodate both commissions' recommendations, and I think also the communities.
I think it's a reasonable request. I don't know if we make it of staff as we move this item, or what would be appropriate? Go ahead, Councilmember.
Well, I thought that was the reason why we went with Mariposa Park, because it embraced both languages, and it made it Spanglish, how we often see in Santana. So I'm comfortable leaving it as Mariposa Park, that way it's consistent with the other parks in the city, unless I'm mistaken of the other parks that do have that translation somewhere else, if I could.
Thoughts on that?
The only thing was, I know that we have some, like, let's say, Plaza Calle Cuatro, you know, so that's a full Spanish translation. So this one would be sort of having both recognized. And I think, like I said, because we had two commissions that maybe weren't able to reconcile the two, I think they're both warranted, and I don't think it would take too much, would it be an additional cost to maybe do that underneath?
Very minor, so if you've made the motion and you requested that we do the dual postage in both ways, we could certainly do that on the side for you.
I mean, I think it takes the spirit of what we're trying to say, which is embracing both recommendations, both languages, I think it's reasonable. I think we, you know, when we do parks, let's say, in heavily Vietnamese communities, I know we had a city monument that was done in Vietnamese, recognizing Little Saigon, I think those are things that I think speak to the multicultural, diverse communities that we have in the city.
Mayor Protown?
Mr. Mayor, I think that the Mariposa Park came about because it was to be consistent with all other 40 parks that we have here.
So you think that already is a...
We just want to keep consistency. But if my colleague wants to have the name underneath, we can give direction on that, but we just have one name. It won't be confusion.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
If Madam City Manager, you might want Parks and Rec staff to answer this, but what other parks have that Spanish? I'm thinking of Cesar Chavez Park, Chepas Park, Salgado, the Campesino, do they all have the Spanish translation underneath? Because I feel like that would just open up, you know, a can of worms, to say, but not really worms, but, I mean, it's not a bad thing, but I'm just saying that if we do this, would that mean that we would have to follow suit with all the other parks that have similar names?
You certainly would not have to follow suit with it, and you are correct, the majority of our parks have the name first and park following the name. I think the issue here is you did have the Parks and Rec Commission want a different name than what the Planning Commission had, so that it was... name than what the Planning Commission had, so that it was, it's a way to reconcile it. But officially, it would be Mariposa Park, if I'm understanding the direction that Councilmember Sarmiento is requesting.
Okay. I think that if it was, I just think of Mariposa Park as embracing both cultures and languages versus the Planning Commission, they would have recommended Butterfly Park, which that would have completely just gone over the wanting to have the Spanish language in there. So I'm comfortable with Mariposa Park. I'm not sure...
Leave it as is.
Yeah. I mean, I'd make a motion to, I'd move the item to leave it as is.
Staff recommendation.
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. So with that, further discussion, or?
I'll be a no.
All right. Those in favor, please vote green. If you're a no, vote red. All right. Next, item fifty-five A, I believe. I would entertain a motion on this item.
So moved.
We have speakers? Oh, there's a note of office. Alberta Christie, are you here? Come on down.
If you would raise your right hand and repeat after me, aye. Please state your name for the record. Thank you. Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
...that I will support...
That I will support.
...and defend...
And defend.
...the Constitution...
The Constitution.
...of the United States...
The United States.
...and the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
...of the State of California...
And the State of California.
...against all enemies...
Against all enemies.
...foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
...that I will...
That I will.
...bear true faith...
Bear true faith.
...and allegiance...
And allegiance.
...to the Constitution...
To the Constitution.
...of the United States...
To the United States.
...and the Constitution...
And the Constitution.
...of the State of California...
The State of California.
...that I take this obligation freely...
That I take this obligation freely.
...without any mental reservation...
Without any mental reservation.
...or purpose of evasion...
Or purpose of evasion.
...that I will...
That I will.
...well and faithfully...
Well and faithfully.
...discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
...upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And...
I also want to acknowledge Rosie Avila. She's in the audience, sitting next to Alberta, or Alberta next to her, and she served on the school board and volunteered so much for this community for so many years, Rosie. It's a pleasure to have you here tonight. So with that, let's go on to item, I believe it was fifty-five A. I will entertain a motion on this item.
So moved.
Those in favor, please say aye. Aye, those opposed, press red. If you're for it, press green. And let's go on to the next item. Item...
On sixty-A? Yes.
All right, that's the next item. If you want, you can speak on fifty-five A. We already adopted it. That was a resolution for a water integrated regional water management plan.
A little late, George, but...
All right. Speakers, Lucy Santana. This is on sixty-A. It's an authorization to negotiate a development disposition agreement, DDA, for the renovation and reuse of the YMCA property. So let's start with Lucy, and followed by Heather Luis Martinez. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Councilmember, City Manager. Thank you for having us here this evening. As you stated, my name is Lucy Santana, and I am a longtime member and resident of the city of Santa Ana, grew up here. I am also a proud volunteer of Relámpago del Cielo, Grupo Folklorico. Been doing that for twenty-six years, and currently serving as the board and chair president for ten years. As our role in working in the community, we have been in partnership with the Orange County School of the Arts for the last sixteen years. We have a partnership where we're able to serve our kids there every Saturday in our classes. Sixteen years ago, we started with sixty students. We are now at over three hundred students there every Saturday, and it really has become part of our history, our culture. We're able to really build that relationship. Also, through our partnership, we have seen that more and more of our kids that live here in Santa Ana have been able to transfer and now become students at OSHA. So today, we're just here to state our opinion, I guess, and our thoughts on the current situation on sixty-A. We were very hopeful that the recommendation currently, that was initially made, where it scored high for Orange County School of the Arts to be considered to take over the YMCA property, has now changed. We hope that we can continue the conversation in terms of creating the YMCA into an educational institution, as well as providing some community space for culture and arts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And after Heather Oralia Aguilera, I believe it is, followed by Valerie Tsai.
Good evening. My name is Heather Luis Martinez. I'm a sixteen-year resident of the city of Santa Ana. I've long admired the YMCA building. I have four kids that I've shuttled for twelve years downtown to go to school and to dance folklorico with Relámpago del Cielo, and I've watched the building sit. There were a couple times that there were boards that were taken off the building, and we thought, yes, something, somebody's going to take over this amazing piece of property here in downtown, to only see it boarded up again. And so we're at this space that the city council has in a unique opportunity in their hands. We know that research says that community spaces are vital to our youth. They're vital for creating safe spaces for students and youth to grow up in, and with a community as large as ours, we only have less than ten community centers in our city. This opportunity, opening up the YMCA building to OSHA and Relámpago del Cielo, would be an amazing opportunity. Twenty-eight percent of our youth in this city are under the age of eighteen. So if you do the math for a city of three hundred and forty thousand people, that is eleven thousand people under the age of eighteen, served by the less than ten community centers that we have. This amazing opportunity to open this building would change the lives of so many other kids. So we're looking at you at this point to build on creating community of what we've heard from the chaplain, what we've heard from members of the Chamber of Commerce. This is an amazing opportunity to build community, and right now, as a mama for kids who live in this city, go to school in this city, dance in this city, I look to you to be that positive beacon of hope and open another community center at the YMCA. Thank you.
Oralia, please go ahead, followed by Valerie Tsai, and then Marlene Peña. Merine, please go ahead.
Good evening to all. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I am, as mentioned, Oralia Aguilera. I have been a resident of Santa Ana for more than thirty years. I have been a teacher in the Santa Ana Unified School District for twenty-five years. I am speaking to you in those, in that capacity, but also as a mother of two, who have benefited from the blessings that we have through Relámpago del Cielo and the partnership with OSHA. And a lot of families would share, in my experience, in that we might not have had, our children might not have had the opportunity to be exposed to the arts and to a great education, had not the partnership existed. And so my two children have been in Relámpago del Cielo for many years, and I've been a parent for OSHA, an OSHA parent, for about eight years, with just the two students of mine, my own children. But also as a teacher, I have seen how having these partnerships and having these opportunities opens such a door of opportunity for children. I have, I had a student recently who could not do PE, who could not dance on our events at school, but after several surgeries, he was able to participate through the programs that OSHA offers to the community. So OSHA is a very integral part and has come into our lives, into our city, and has done a lot of good things, and we would just love for that to continue, along with Relámpago del Cielo, who serves so many families and so many children, who again, have an opportunity to be exposed to the arts and to something different. As we all know, Santa Ana offers some great opportunities, but the district has reduced the amount of art classes, music classes. Me, as a first-grade teacher, have not had a music specialist, a music teacher, come into my classroom for over twelve years. There's no art programs in the elementary schools offered to our children. So it's really important, as Heather Luis Martinez was saying, that you, the council, have opportunities, have the opportunity to give us opportunities, us, the community. So I thank you so much. I hope that in, as we continue working together, we can keep the interest of our children in mind. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Valerie. Valerie, followed by Marlene, and then José Rea.
Thank you, Mayor and the council members. My name is Valerie, and I'm a resident of Santa Ana for ten years now. When I chose to come here and live here, I chose Santa Ana specifically because of the multicultural diversity that I wanted to expose my young daughters to. And here, with the support of Relámpago del Cielo, they have made an immense, powerful impact for not just my daughters, but our family overall, giving my daughters the opportunity to be part of a familia that they wouldn't have had elsewhere, really, because of our different cultural backgrounds. And so nowadays, I think, especially nowadays with the tense racial state of affairs, it is so important that we strive beyond just teaching tolerance to our children, but to really show our children the beauty of other cultures, so that they can embrace it completely. And so for that, I cannot thank Relámpago del Cielo enough for being so valuable, invaluable to my family and I. And I would like you guys to consider Relámpago del Cielo for the space, because it does indeed work within your five-year strategic plan, goal number two of youth education and recreation. So again, it is within your means to make it happen. Thank you.
Now, Marlene, if appropriate, I know Manny's memory is never far from our minds, and he did so much for Relámpago, and if you want to mention any point, that'd be appropriate.
Thank you. It's funny, when I walked here, the first thing I thought about was my dad, because I know he was here quite often, with all of you, good, better, and different, sharing his views in this community, which he loved dearly. So thank you for that. Let me put myself together. Anyhow, Marlene Peña Merine, Artistic Director of Relámpago del Cielo, thank you so much for your time, Mayor and city council members, for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the project with the Orange County School of the Arts and Relámpago del Cielo. What I want to add, our families that spoke so eloquently prior to myself, Relámpago's original idea and mission when they started the organization in nineteen seventy-five was that it wasn't going to be just about this dance group, it was also going to be about reaching the community. And the ultimate goal was to have a community center and a cultural center. When OSHA approached me for the project, I thought, wow, this is really great, because every day when I drive by the YMCA building for the last sixteen years, I thought, how cool would it be that Relámpago had that as their cultural center? Never thinking that maybe it was a possibility. So when I was approached by the Orange County School of the Arts, I went home and I thought, wow, okay. Dreams sometimes do come true. And I know that it's a big dream, and it's a pie in the sky, but again, going back to the original mission of serving the community with more than just dance classes, serving the community with other art forms that represent Mexico and other Latin culture communities, that's really been the goal. So if I could leave you with anything, is, it is a big decision. I do understand all the parts of it, but I also believe that revitalizing that historical building, that's so beautiful, and bringing that back to the community where it was initially built for, I think would say a lot about who we are as a city, who we are as a community, and how we want to reach our youth and our community, and giving it back to them. So again, thank you for your time. I think everyone has stated all their pros to this project, and so I'm just going to leave it with that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rosie. José Rea, Marlene. Rosie, your mom. José Rea, please. Followed by Christina García Rea. And José de Jesús Rea. May you all come and down. Rodrigo Rea, please go ahead.
We all the same thing. Come, guys. We're a family. We're all four going to speak. So, buenas tardes. Mi nombre es José Rea, and I'm here to speak to you as a board member of the Relámpago del Cielo, as a father of two, and also as a father for OSHA, and also for Relámpago del Cielo, and a resident of Santa Ana for thirty-seven years. I'm also the executive director of a nonprofit that works at Madison Elementary. I'm sure Mr. Peñalosa and Mr. Sarmiento are aware of the work that we do there, as well as Councilman Villegas. And so I just wanted to make your humble, little issue, Mr. Polito. So I recently attended a couple of budget meetings, where they asked the community, what are the priorities that you would like to see the city embark on? And if I remember correctly, the top priority was to invest in youth, and invest in all youth in Santa Ana. You know, we, our family, is one of the privileged ones in Santa Ana. Both my wife and I are professionals. We are now retired, and our kids got the best education that is available to anybody in Santa Ana. They got a dual immersion program, followed by OSHA, and they will tell you a little bit more about themselves and how they benefited from that. So I just wanted to remind you that the motto of the city of Santa Ana is education first. And I want you to look into that partnership that is in front of you, to allow this partnership between OSHA, the wooden floor, and Relámpago del Cielo to use that building for their purposes. Relámpago del Cielo, if you didn't know, is an institution with a forty, forty-five year history in Santa Ana. You need to keep it here in Santa Ana, and here's your opportunity to keep it here in Santa Ana, because all the city want to grab it. And it belongs to us, and I think you owe to the youth in Santa Ana to create more opportunities at OSHA, and not just for the privileged ones, as your kids or our kids. And we need more, not less, opportunities in education here in Santa Ana.
Good evening. My name is Christina García Rea, and I have been a resident of Santa Ana my whole life, way back when the YMCA used to teach us to swim and things like that. That's what the building used to have, all kinds of activities for kids. When the Orange County High School of the Arts arrived here, I think it was just like a momentous occasion for our city, because it brought a higher level of education to our students. As a former teacher, I can tell you that there's nothing like education to bring our kids up to where they want to be, to make them competitive with other children, other cities, competitive when they're applying to the university. I feel that the expansion of the high school... I feel that the expansion of the High School of the Arts is going to provide more opportunities, because it will, it will allow them to have more children, there are more children that can, that can addition. And not only that, the idea that they're going to be working with community groups like The Wooden Floor and Relámpago del Cielo, it makes it work hand in hand. The children will, will be trained by Relámpago, by The Wooden Floor, and then have a better opportunity to be accepted when they addition to the High School of the Arts. On a personal note, both of my sons have gone to the High School of the Arts, and I believe that they got the best education they could get here in Santa Ana. And my oldest son now is a junior at UCI, and my youngest is a junior at High School of the Arts. I urge you to please consider allowing the High School of the Arts to, to expand and take over the YMCA building. Thank you.
My name is José Rea, and I'm currently a junior at UC Irvine, where I'm studying Computer Science and Engineering. I graduated from the High School of the Arts in 2018, and I attended the school for six years. During this time, I was able to improve my skills as a folklorico dancer, while also receiving an excellent education. My academic training at the School of the Arts also prepared me for the rigors of university classes at UC Irvine. My folklorico dance preparation at the school has allowed me to become a part of the Relámpago del Cielo Dance Company, while also being able to perform and work at Disney's California Adventure Park. I urge you to support the expansion of the Orange County School of the Arts, so that more students from Santana have the same opportunities that I have. Please support our youth. Thank you.
Good evening. Sorry. Good evening. My name is Rodrigo Rea, and I am a junior currently at the Orange County School of the Arts, and I believe it would be a really great thing to allow the Orange County School of the Arts to move into the YMCA building, because it, it allows kids, or kids there in Relámpago del Cielo to really, well, they can start dancing, and you can have more kids there, because if you can fit 300 kids in one school on one day, on one Saturday, imagine how much, how many more kids you could fit into that building? And that would be so many more kids that are eligible to go to Orange County School of the Arts. And that would be a really, very great thing, because Orange County School of the Arts is a very, very intensive, and it is very academic, so it will help the kids improve in their academics, and also, excuse me, also, it would really help all the kids of Santa Ana to improve. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and with that, may we bring it back to council for thoughts and consideration. Let me thank the community and, you know, folks for coming out and speaking. And as we deliberate, let me just let everybody know, especially folks at home, that I personally have spent a lot of time on this issue, talking to Ralph Obasic and the folks at the high school, talking to Mike O'Hara and Caribou Industries, talking to my council colleagues, previous city manager, this city manager, a bunch of other folks trying to figure out, you know, can we do something to merge both groups? And, you know, it's not over till it's over, and regardless of what happens today, I think both groups ought to continue talking to each other, just to see what we can do in the future, because that is a great building, great locale, and makes a lot of sense for what both the Caribou folks want to do, and the OSHA folks want to do. So, may there's a compromise at some point in the future. But for now, we have to talk, deliberate, hopefully, you know, start moving in a direction, may that'll encourage solutions. So, with that, let me go to my colleagues for any comments. Rosie, you want to speak?
Are you going to decide on the YMCA or not?
That's what we're talking about right now.
I think on that instead of my own belief.
Go ahead, come on up.
Well, I came to Santa Ana about 30 years ago, when I ran for the school board. First, I wanted city council members, mayor, new city manager. Thank you for letting me speak. And I was unaware of the big challenges of Santa Ana. I lived down by South Coast Plaza, and I took my kids to the merry-go-round. And when I was on the school board and had to expel kids for drug use, gangs, and, and see the mothers crying, and, and learn about all the fatherless children, my heart broke. I started nonprofits, I did character clubs in the school, I'm getting to the, why the YMCA.
The light's still green, you can say whatever you want, but when it's red, oh...
And I, I did, you know, teen sports programs in the city, and then I went to Garden Grove and did a thrift store to teach vulnerable youth how to work and start businesses. And now, the last eight years, I've been working on homeless issues, so I've been all over the place. And the issues are so big. How are we going to get rid of all of the drug use among our young people? Or get rid of the homeless? I mean, really solve the homeless situation. And I, I don't think it would hurt to put the national motto up, and I think it would also reflect the cultural and religious values of our community. But, my son went to the High School of the Arts, and I am recommending that you give the YMCA to Caribou Industries and to Mike O'Hara. I think that what this city needs is a big economic boom, and where there's an abundance of jobs, where our kids can find so much work, and maybe even get paid higher wages, because there's such a need right here for them. And I will be right there pushing their backs. So, I, I would like to encourage you to go with Caribou Industries, for the young people that I love.
With that, council, thoughts or comments? Councilor Solario, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I do agree with, you know, everybody that spoke, and we do need to find, you know, more venues for, you know, young people and families to recreate, to dance, to do after-school activities, especially over the summer when there's a gap, you know, given that the schools are closed. This building unfortunately has been in a very bad state for the past 20, 30 years, and I think a lot of folks have, have looked at it, but just rehabbing these old historical structures is really hard and very expensive. So, maybe we can help find other facilities for this, this nonprofit, because it does have a very impressive, you know, legacy on the dancing side, but also on the academic side. I've seen, you know, many of those students do, do great things, and, you know, sometimes going into an older building, like that also means more maintenance costs and other issues, but, you know, hopefully we can work with you to see what your needs are for additional facilities, and we could work towards that. And that's not to say that, you know, with this item here, it's, it's not the final, you know, piece of action with respect to, you know, Mr. O'Hara, you know, figuring out whether this makes sense or not, but we would ask, you know, Mr. O'Hara to continue to see if there is an opportunity to work there together. I know, you know, our mayor has made that effort for some time, and it's, it's been hard, but I, now I'm seeing you as a dance group kind of leading the effort rather than, you know, OSHA overall, and so maybe that might be a game changer as well, you know, you working directly through Mike, so I would just, you know, ask for that. But, you know, we've been holding action on this time for, for months, and, you know, that's how a project becomes, you know, 20 years late and happening, because of, you know, continuances after continuances, and I think this community is, is hungry to see that improved. And so, I'm very much prepared to support this with, again, the, the encouragement that Mr. O'Hara, see if he can work out something with them, and that staff also talk to the nonprofit, to see if we can find other options for them. Thank you.
Thanks for that other comment. Councilor Peñalosa, any comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, like every other resident in the city, would like to see this area developed much rather very quickly. I'm just tired, it's an eyesore, and I'm tired of seeing it be an eyesore for years, years, my entire life, literally, it's been boarded up. So, if we were to move down this direction with this DDA, with Caribou Industries, I would highly encourage to make sure that we have language in there that really is on a very, very strict timeline. I've said it before, I come from the private sector, and I work in the private sector here in Santa Ana, and manufacturing company, been there for 11 years, and, and we need things done yesterday. You know, the email that I sent five minutes ago should have had a response 10 minutes ago. And, and to see things just kind of sit idle and not see much action on it is, is always upsetting across the board, whether it's everything from the smallest graffiti removal to, to big projects like this. So, I'd really like to make sure that language is included in there, that any proposed development, that there has to be a strict timeline, that we're not going to be, you know, extending every three months, every six months, you know, there's another extension. Now, before we know it, we're five years later, and it's still the, the same thing. So, those are my comments. I want to thank the, the School of the Arts for, for coming out and, and speaking on the item. I would just hope that you guys all, you know, take Spanish one-on-one and say Relámpago, not Relámpago, and it's, you know, that, that's the only request that I make. It just makes me cringe every time I hear it, I'm like, ugh, stop. With that said, that, that is the only comment I have.
Councilor Cecilia Glazias, please.
I want to thank, too, the, the students and the parents and the community members for speaking out on this, this site, and it's something that what Councilman, Councilmember Peñalosa has said, when I used to work for the County of Warren Social Services Agency, too, I used to be here on 888 North Main Street, I would pass by that building all the time, and it's, and it's definitely, it's been in very, the condition is, it's a sad condition that it's in, and it's, it needs renovation. And I would second what Councilmember Peñalosa said, it's something that, if we go into this, Christine, Madam City Manager, it's, we should put in there the time restriction. I, I don't know what, what is appropriate for this type of agreement, but we, we should put it in there, because there, there's been talk in the community that, you know, there's just some things that are not moving forward, and I truly appreciate and respect Mr. O'Hara. But, you know, also, there, there's been some other projects that have been in the works, and nothing has, nothing much has materialized from it, and I just don't want it to be another project that is just going to be held up, and then no one can do anything. So, if, if you could put in there, or maybe you can speak on it right now, what is the, the timeline on, on a project like this, that we could, you know, as a council, ask Mr. O'Hara to ensure that it's in the agreement?
So, with this, this is actually a disposition and development agreement, or a DDA. It is a little different than an ENA, which is an exclusive negotiating agreement, which you've done before. It does have hard deliverables and timelines in it to keep it alive as a document. One of the things that is in his proposal already is within 180 days, he is going to beautify the exterior of the structure. So, within six months, if authorized to execute and negotiate this with him, you would see that happening very rapidly.
Okay. So, it's just the exterior, but how about like the entire development of it? Because I know Mr. O'Hara has, he has a great vision, and I, and I really like the, the project that he has proposed, and, and I, and I believe it's going to give a, like Ms. Avila said, a boost to our economy, but it's like, what's the timeframe for that?
With your direction, we will certainly negotiate as hard as we can with expedited timeline. The building, one of the reasons that it has sat vacant for so long is it does pose a lot of unique challenges as a historic structure, so there is substantial seismic and retrofitting that needs to go on in the building. And I know one of Caribou's, what they would like to achieve is to retain as much of the historical features of it. And I'm not sure if all of you have had the opportunity to actually go into the building. I was able to visit it with Councilmember Penalosa, and there is some really beautiful features that are in there. They're a little dirty, and they have some graffiti on them, but to restore those also takes a little bit of a longer time, but we will work really diligently, knowing that that is your, your direction.
Okay. So, then if it would have been, say, given to OSHA, the same requirements and the same timeline could have also been applied to them?
They would have to absolutely retrofit the building as well, because it would not be habitable without that type of work performed on it.
So, then you'll be keeping us updated as the project moves along?
Certainly can. So, once, if this is just authorizing me to negotiate the DDA, the DDA will come back to you for approval.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, Councilor Peñalosa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, yeah, we did go in there and took a tour of it, it's a beautiful building. And I just wanted a, just a little fun fact, all that graffiti in there, and the, I and Christine were both under the impression, we're like, oh, the, the homeless have been in here, and the junkies have taken over, and they've, over the years. So, I posted pictures on Instagram of my day at the YMCA building. I got messages from people I went to junior high with, that I haven't seen in 10-plus years, and they said, wow, I haven't been there in years. That was the hangout spot in the early 2000s, so it was a bunch of punk kids that were breaking in and hanging out, doing god knows what. And so, that answered the gra, I was like, oh, so you guys are behind the graffiti? And they're like, well, it's part of it. I was like, unbelievable. But, they're not friends of mine, they were just people on, you know, Facebook, everyone just kind of, that was just interesting to see that, because I just, I was like, how do they get in here and graffiti this? And anyways, I would also encourage, whatever other language is in there, to make sure that we do our best to protect those bees. There was about four very, very large honeycomb. When I mean large, it's like the size of this back wall, in bees in numerous parts of the area. So, I would, I would want somebody to go in there carefully, and, and when that is, is done, and...
And may keep them within the city.
Sure. I, I, we'll put them at your house, there's lots of trees.
Yeah, yeah, here we go. They're for our flowers and our trees.
Yeah. And, but I'd also like to, to make sure that if we do go forward with the ZDA, that there's language in there that restricts the, the sale of the, of the, of the, whenever it's done, if it does get there to any nonprofit or any, any entity that would limit any tax revenue to the city. Just make sure that if we do go down, because I've, I've gone through the numerous, our five-year strategic plan, and entering into this DDA does match about six of the goals, you know, economic development, safe neighborhoods, and, and jobs, so it's, but it, it would, I would want it to stay that way, versus seeing it go off to some nonprofit, you know, 10 years afterwards, and, you know, there goes any benefit to the city. So, just wanted to make sure that that was noted, Ms. City Manager.
All right, let's keep taking, receiving comment. Councilor Vince Sarmiento, any comments? Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a while back, the school and Mr. O'Hara was supposed to work together, and they both have a long history here, and if I recall, I think the school's in existence because Mr. O'Hara helped a lot way back, if I recall. And I'm sorry there wasn't, they weren't able to work something out. I remember I was at a meeting with Mr. O'Hara, and I was telling him, if you could do something for this one baleflorcorico group, I, I would appreciate it, and it turned out, and I told him the name, and it wasn't until after I realized that you were part of the school. Big surprise to me. And I'm torn when it comes to this, because this group, Relámpago del Cielo, they've been here for 40-plus years. You have, you have the Peña family here, who their parents started this a while back. And this group is, we're talking about generations, and they put on a great show, and they've grown so much, and they bring so much culture, and it's just great things to our city. And there's nothing that I would love to do more than to help them. But I have to look at the facts, and the YMCA's been closed a while, and Mr. O'Hara does have a lot of the parking issues. When I read some of the staff report, it looks like the school can't do much without a partner, you need a partner. That's why them working together was a great thing. Apparently, they couldn't see eye to eye on a few things. So, and we're talking $13 million, I believe, Mr. Mayor, $13 million is the cleanup cost, just to get started on the YMCA. $13 million are going to, you're going to throw right in, you're not going to get anything other than it's going to be cleaned up.
Seismic work.
Everything that's in there. Right. There's, there's a few expenses also, problems in there. So... So, you know, it's just tough. And so I just wanted to lay those facts out. And I still admire and wanna help this group. And I'm constantly looking for ways to see what we can do as a city. And I know my colleagues would love to help out also, but on this particular item here and this agreement here, it's leaning towards Mr. Hera, because, well, they have the money and the capability to go ahead and do something right now. And so, we can't let the building sit there much longer, we have to, we have to make a decision. And these things are tough. And so I just wanted to make that very clear to the public and to our friends on both sides, you know, Cariboo Industries and the School of Arts. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Armiento. If not, I've got comments. Go ahead.
Yeah, just briefly, Mr. Mayor. So there's some legislative history on this site. Many years ago, a previous council put this public asset for procurement, and I believe it was Madam City Attorney, if it's correct, we circulated it twice, right? So the Edabit Committee, which has been kinda transformed, proposed this site and the third and Broadway parking structure to go out to bid, so we could develop some economic development drivers. So that was the initial purpose that these assets were put out for. And unfortunately, we didn't get many bids. I think Mr. Hera was probably one of the few people that did bid both times. But we decided to go in a different direction when the bids came back to us. I think it was St. Joseph's that got the majority support for them to develop a wellness center. And we, you know, had a lot of faith and confidence in what they could do. And, you know, three or four years down the line, they realized that they couldn't, they didn't have the financing or the capitalization or the ability to realize that, so we had to come back again. So it's had a long tortured past. And really, these assets were here to generate revenue for the city. When OSHA proposed their development, as well as the sound and as well as, you know, the other, the fourth firm, they all had really great conceptuals. But we had such a relationship, such a long-term relationship with both Cariboo and with OSHA, that we kinda forced them into a shotgun marriage at that point and said, can you both just work together, because we don't wanna say no to either of you? We realized that, you know, as I think, you know, Jose Reyes' family said, the commitment that we had to youth and the ability to develop more economic revenue for the city were so compelling that we thought, maybe there's a way we can have both of these uses work. Unfortunately, they just appeared to be incompatible after some time. So my question for, you know, for Madam City Attorney now is, is there a way that, and everybody's talked about timelines, so, you know, we all get that, is there a way to maybe put some additional language in this that in the event that the, let's assume, you know, Cariboo gets this, if they can't perform within a time certain, and it's not the 180 days that I'm worried about, I mean, anybody can fix up the exterior, it's the actual seismic retrofitting, all the really, really expensive work that occurs. If they can't realize that, let's say, within a year, can this revert back to the city and we put, sort of give the first option to OSHA, where we don't circulate again, but we actually just go back and say, we had a backup bidder. And that's done all the time when it comes to receiverships, you know, trustees and bankruptcy do it all the time. So, you know, is there a way we can do that?
Yeah, just so the council knows, a DDA is actually what it's called, the disposition, you're disposing of the property and development, you're actually envisioning a development agreement. So it's disposition and development agreement. There are two key components to that agreement. One's called a scope of development, in which you negotiate what you want to be there. But the most important aspect of the DDA is a schedule of performance. That's when the staff will negotiate when they want to see milestones achieved and which milestones they want to see achieved. So we can negotiate, and as the city manager said, the staff will be negotiating and coming back to the council, and you'll get to see all those deal points. So we will, if that's the direction you give to us this evening, then the city manager would work with her staff to negotiate that schedule of performance. And it could be, if there's not, if they're not meeting the milestones, then we can move to terminate the DDA at that time and you'd be free to choose another entity to negotiate with.
Right. My question is, can you add a reversion clause, that it reverts back to us for the purpose of having OSHA be first in line?
And you could give that direction as well. When you make the action to do the DDA as part of the action, you could say, and staff, if you terminate, then we automatically enter into a backup agreement. And we could even work on that agreement while we're working on the DDA.
And the reason for that is that, look, this has been, I think we're going on 10 years maybe on this thing. So to the extent that we don't go back, have to recirculate again and go through this whole cycle, you know, it could sit for another 10 years. So I just don't want it to sit idly by, so to the extent we can include that language now and be done with it and it binds us in the future, I would add that as a friendly amendment.
Let me say a few words and may I speak to that as well. I think that could be a, and should be a very beneficial friendly amendment to the original motion here, but it should not be, I believe, something that discourages a potential partnership. If OSHA and Cariboo were all of a sudden to say, okay, we figure out how to work together, I don't want them to think, well, gee, if we simply don't make it work and hold out and he fails, then we'll get it. That's not the intent. The intent is that that's a backup if everything else fails, but, you know, that maybe they can still consider working together. Let me just say a few more words relative to this as an overall issue. And that is that earlier, we spoke about how maybe if a nonprofit is in there, it's not good, because it doesn't generate taxes. I would challenge that mentality in the sense that I think if there is an effective nonprofit, that saves a lot of taxes, because you're taking, you know, kids off the streets, you don't have to hire police officers and have code enforcement and the broken theory, you know, window theory and everything else. So, you know, benefit to society comes in many ways. And I believe one of the best ways are effective nonprofits that are delivering an effective service to the community that in exchange enhances the community overall. So I, because I know earlier, as you're giving me direction, Madam City Manager, I believe it was Counselor Peña Loza that indicated, you know, let's make sure there's a clause in there that never goes to nonprofit. I don't think that's the intent of what we're talking about here. Certainly, OSHA would be a nonprofit, and if OSHA ends up getting it at the end of the day, I don't think, as long as it benefits the community, that's what we need to be doing. Do you wanna say something, and then I'll continue? Please, go ahead.
I didn't mean not to ever go to nonprofit. I said that if we were to give it to Cariboo Industries and they do develop the area and make it, they don't just turn around and sell it to a nonprofit where it's gonna not, you know, what was the whole point of this? Then we should have just gone with OSHA from the very beginning. That was my, because I think of a beautiful building like the, what now is the Scientology Building. I mean, that should have stayed to benefit the community and now it's in this, what I think is a cold, but that's my opinion, you know, and it has no benefit to the city whatsoever. So that's what I meant when, after any redevelopment is done with the property, it shouldn't just get sold off to just anybody. So we should have some kind of say in that as well. If this is, if this is a serious development and it's developed, you know, let's make sure that it stays in a way where it would benefit the city, whether it's going to OSHA or somebody else after the fact.
Okay. And to that effect, I understand the current proposal, if it's converted potentially into a hotel, that'd be private sector 100%. So a lot of the quote-unquote "community," unless they're gonna go stay there at the hotel, and why would you go a few blocks from your house to stay at a hotel, is really not gonna have access to it. So, so I, you know, again, I don't know, I don't know if it's possible for these groups to continue to work together, because there is a lot of benefit if we can get them to do that. Other thing I wanna say is that parking is essential. And as I understand it from city staff, only the Cariboo Industries proposal is properly parked. The other proposals right now don't have sufficient parking. And as we all know, without parking, things just don't function in today's world. Maybe in the future, there'll be Ubers everywhere and scooters everywhere and we're not gonna need parking, but right now, we still need parking. The other thing I wanna direct is, as we do this DA, develop disposition, we're talking about 180 days. I wanna be real specific and maybe encourage less than 180 days, because I know that I've seen, you know, Cariboo Industries and Mike Hera do things in amazing ways. And, you know, Relámpago del Cielo means lightning from the sky. So, you know, in the interim, if they can use the building or, I don't know, be creative, you know, things that are safe, that'd be a beautiful thing. And back to Relámpago, you know, maybe there's also other places that we can help them get into. I know over by the train station, we have the, is it the wooden floor, or there's a group there that's now using some of those buildings in the community spaces within the buildings that are being utilized. There's a lot of development going on right now in the downtown and beyond. Maybe we can find other homes for Relámpago, because, you know, they can dance many places, they'll just move around as long as they're there and they're happy. And, I mean, I remember the old days with Relámpago, there was nothing. I mean, you know, when Manny was, you know, all he had was cowboy boots and he'd stamp really loud, but we had like a little floor, I remember over on Ford Street somewhere, and you'd get there and it was a little tiny room, and it's like, this is it? You're gonna do all this stuff in here? And they would. So, you know, we've come a long way and it's, I know that there's other organizations as well that are working with OSHA. And OSHA's an amazing institution, doing great work, and we wanna do whatever we can to continue to be good neighbors and friends with OSHA. Other thing I wanted to say was that on the, you know, those first 180 days or less, let's be real specific about, you know, are there finishes? Are we painting the building? Are we doing landscaping? Let's get it clear so that when it comes to the council, we know what we're talking about, we don't think, gee, that's not what we thought. Let's define it clearly what we thought. And relative to the final build out, I know it's seismic, I know it's a lot of work, but there's gotta be some, you know, milestones and timelines, maybe an overall, you know, three-year period of time, you know, is a goal for final completion, because otherwise it can be a slippery slope, something doesn't happen. Look what happened to us with, you know, the St. Joseph's, was it the Sisters of St. Joseph? I mean, they had billions of dollars, they were gonna do this project, and then, you know, it went on and on and on and on, and ultimately, nothing happened and here we are again. So let's not make that, allow that to happen. And I know the, Mr. Hera's in the back of the room, he's nodding yes, so he's hearing every word. And, you know, with Relámpago, we're all friends, you know, let's just continue to figure out how to live that dream and realize that, you know, when Relámpago began, there were a lot less people, a lot less facilities, a lot less recognition. And if we do it well, 25 years, 30 years, 40 years from now, it's gonna even be a greater organization, hopefully helping even more and more kids and kids become adults and have better lives. And that's why we're here. So with that, is that pretty clear direction? If we take a motion and vote yes, you've got a pretty good handle?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So with that, I believe, is there a motion, a formal motion? Okay, motion. We have three seconds, the clerk can choose who they want to second, either Iglesias or Villegas. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye is the green button. All right, so let's move forward and make good things happen. Thank you, everybody. So with that, our next item, 65A. What is the pleasure of the council? I know we discussed this earlier. Any discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion and we'll go from there.
Actually, Mayor, these items would require you to, I think, do a discussion and make some choices as to what you're directing us to do.
Which one of these? What is the pleasure of the council?
So each item here that you have before you, the first one is reviewing the current board vacancies and appointments with expired terms, and then just giving me direction to initiate the process for appointments. So what we're gonna do in our office is just provide an advertisement indicating that there are these vacancies. And this would include those with expired terms.
I don't think that, go ahead, Counselor Iglesias.
I have a question, because I don't, I don't think that's what was intended. When we talked about it, and it was one of my items that I had in 85A, is we don't have a sitting council member for Ward Four. So since we don't have one, then we shouldn't be having any commissioners for Ward Four. So then it's, if anything is, you know, and I know it could be done, because it was done prior last year, I think it was like around June, July, when a commissioner was removed at the pleasure of the council.
Council member, I'm sorry, that is on here as well.
Yes, that's item number three of the list.
Okay.
There's three items we wanted you to consider.
And actually, for that specific ward, it requires, there's only vacancies and expired terms. None of them are because of a sitting member. So every one of those are currently either expired or vacant.
For Ward Four?
For Ward Four, that's correct.
So there's nobody serving on any commission from Ward Four?
The ones who are serving are expired terms. So those who are-
And she wants them removed?
Yeah, so that's-
So that's every one of them that's listed on that report.
So that would be option number three?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is that the motion, that we approve option number three?
That's what I would recommend, to remove everyone from Ward Four.
Okay. And now, there's other wards that also have vacancies and expired terms, and that's where number one comes in.
But that's different, she wants only Ward Four, because there's no sitting council member from Ward Four.
I don't mind the cleanup, but the youth commissioners, do you really wanna remove them? I mean-
From Ward Four?
Ward Four, is that term expired also? I mean, I wouldn't make an exception with our youth, they-
That's correct, they're all expired.
They're not expired?
They are expired.
They are expired?
They are expired or vacant.
Can we reach out to them and, you know, have them reapply? I mean, the kids-
So there's several, yeah, there's options.
The kids are always, it's a little different for me when it comes down to this.
Yeah, so there's several options. We can open up to the public and advertise this, or we can, and have as many applicants as we can, and it could, the members who are currently seated could reapply, and then the council could go ahead-
Or we could just exclude the youth commission from this action.
Okay, I would go with that. I hope my colleagues agree.
Sure.
But I guess on the idea that they're all expired, you could just tell them all they're expired, they gotta reapply again, and that's in effect letting them go, and they can reapply, and if the council wants to reconsider them again.
That's correct.
Well, that's about the mechanism or the way of informing them. It does the same effect as what you were talking about, Counselor.
Yeah, the difference is that I would not be advertising unless the council directs me to go and advertise to see if there's any additional interested parties or even the ones that are currently seated.
I'd like to do it as quiet and clean as possible until we have a new election, a new council member's elected, and then let that person come in with recommended folks. Otherwise, we're gonna be considering appointees and nobody really-
That's correct.
Appointing them. And it'll, we'll appoint somebody, then you have a council member elected, and then you're gonna have to do it again, remove them again. So I would say go with option three, except for the youth commission for now. And then when there's a new person elected to that ward, let's see what that person wants to recommend. Counselor Vince Armiento?
So, we're gonna carve out the youth commission because they're youth. Aren't we gonna have some problems with quorum on some commissions that are very important, like planning? So I get the fact that we don't have somebody sitting in Ward Four, and I understand the public policy behind having somebody nominate, but we've always selected our commissioners based upon the will of the council. And it's not a single appointee or a single member of the council that appoints his or her commissioner, but it has to come back to consent by the entire council. So if we're gonna be doing this and we're gonna be carving out based upon youth, shouldn't we also consider that we are gonna have some commissions that are gonna have very thin margins? And with absences, with illnesses, and the planning commission is a quasi-judicial commission, so they have unique authority. They can go ahead and deliberate on things and approve things that other boards and commissions can't. So I guess I'm just having, and I, not to say the youth- So, I guess I'm just having, and I, not to say the youth commission isn't important, but I guess we can say a lot of the commissions have value. And we can, we can talk about the different values that they have and so we're making a decision that's, in my opinion, arbitrary. I mean, I think that at this point, we're going to make it difficult for boards and commissions to deliberate and approve things that are going to be coming before them. So, if we, as a council, it wasn't a single member that appointed these commissioners in Ward Four, it was the council that appointed them. So, to the extent that we're going to, and I get the, I get the fact that, you know, there is, you know, a soft spot for our youth, I mean, we all have that, but I don't like to make arbitrary decisions either, so I can't be supportive of option three.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My take on this is, first off, I think that the youth, there should always be an exception for youth because it's hard to have our young people come and step up and want to serve on these boards and, you know, I just don't see why we couldn't do something for the kids. Second, there is no board higher than this one and we're making things happen and we're one person short, so I don't see why, you know why? One of the reasons that I didn't appoint someone here, first off, you know, I wanted to vote to go to the people. But second of all, everyone here needs to step up so we can get along. And there's nothing wrong with holding our commissioners to the same, you know, that same standard, that they should get along and make a good decision. And I ain't worried about, oh, do we have tiebreaker and all that. You know what? You got to learn to work together and that is my take on that, Mr. Mayor. And I still, I want to make a motion that we go ahead and adopt three and give the exception for the youth.
That's what's on the table right now. So, we have that motion already. Those in favor, please press green, those opposed go red. Isn't that like the Hawaiian symbol for aloha or shocker or something? There you go, Jose, you got it. So, with that, where are we, item?
I think I have a question.
You have a question?
May I confer with the city clerk for just a second? Maybe go on to your next item of business, but I may want to have a point of clarification on that.
All right.
Okay, just based on information.
All right, let's accommodate that. We ready to proceed?
We would like you to go back and do a clarification and take a revote on that item because based on your input, I don't think that the motion that you made and approved is going to achieve what you were looking for. So, what I understand you want to do is you want to remove those that were appointed that have an expired term with the exception of the youth commission. And you also want to ensure that the results of the 2018 general election for Ward Four, which there's only one appointee made that still remains, you want that individual removed as well. Am I correct in my understanding of what you're trying to achieve?
Councilwoman Iglesias?
If I may, but what my thought is to remove everyone except for the youth commissioner.
From Ward Four?
From Ward Four.
That will, that will work for what you want to do on that one, but however, that will not remove the other person because it appears the report attachment is incorrect, that that individual doesn't have an expired term. So, you would want to implement one, recommendation one, with the exception of youth commission and you would want to authorize recommendation three to achieve what I believe you are trying to do.
Well, what three says is, is review appointments post 2018 general election for Ward Four. Direct clerk of the council to take removal action.
Right, and that would be the, the only appointment made after post 2018 from Ward Four, which is the planning commissioner. That planning commissioner's term is not expired, so that person would not be removed-
But she would want that person removed.
By taking action one. Right, so you would, you would make the motion to implement removal of those with expired terms with the exception of youth commissioners and you would make the motion to remove the post 2018 general election-
So, it's one and three?
Yes.
Okay, then.
So, one and three with the exception of, of the youth.
Thank you.
All right, so that's the new motion. Those in favor, please vote green.
We need to stop.
Would three, two pass?
No, you need four.
You need a four, you need four.
We're voting again.
I was stuck in the hallway. Remember the code. What are we waiting for?
The same item, except in order to do what we wanted to, it's got to be one, three, plus the commission. So, it's the same vote we just talked and we need you here because otherwise, there's not enough council members.
Can you explain that to me, Madam City Manager?
Certainly, so the first motion that was made and voted on was removal of commissioners that had expired terms with the exception of youth commissioners. I think the belief of the council was that that would also include the Ward Four post general election 2018 appointee to the planning commission. It would not because that commissioner has not, does not have an expired term. So, to achieve with what I think you wanted to do, you would need to remove those with an expired term with the exception of youth commissioners and remove the one appointee from Ward Four post-election 2018. So, that was the modified motion before you for your consideration.
So, those in favor, please press green, those opposed red. Motion passes. Now, we have a public hearing, item 75A. Do we have any members of the audience at which to address is on the side of Madam Clerk?
No.
Yes, Councilman Pena Loza?
So, just for final clarification, so when the new Ward Four council member gets elected and sworn in later this year, they will just walk into vacancies across the board aside from the youth commission?
There's actually only one Ward Four post 2018 general election appointee serving right now.
But the others will be removed also because they had expired terms. So, to answer your question, they'll appoint everybody in you except for the youth commission?
So, they'll have vacancies one way or another.
Right, one way or another. So, with that, do we have any speakers on item 75A?
We do not.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public hearing anyways and make our city attorney happy. So, this is a public hearing on item 75A. Does anybody wish to address is on this item? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it back to council for consideration. This is to authorize submission of a consolidated annual performance and evaluation report to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. I would entertain a motion.
So, moved.
We have a motion by Solario, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, or everybody voted aye, but anyways, vote green. I still don't understand why we have to do this, but-
Well, the law simply requires that you call out with specificity how people have voted and so you could take-
So, the only, everybody was unanimous except Sarmiento was absent. All right, 75B. This is time and place for a public hearing, recovery of costs and expenditures in an annual amount of $76,000 incurred by the city. I guess we are doing weed and trash abatement within the railroad right-of-way here in the city. We have Lupe Valdez that wishes to address us on this item, so I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. And Lupe, if you could please address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, and thank you for the opportunity to meet with you tonight and discuss several things. I have a statement that I have submitted for the record, but I also want to read it because I realize individuals in the audience and on TV may not understand some of these issues. UP recognizes the presence, I should have said, I am a senior director of public affairs for Union Pacific Railroad, that's who I'm representing tonight. UP recognizes the presence of encampments on its property as an ongoing problem and UP must do a better job of addressing them. However, to keep the Santa Ana situation a little bit in perspective, we have roughly 10 miles of track in your city. In California, we have 3,300 miles of track and across the 23 states, we have 30,000 miles of track. The scale of UP's total footprint makes it challenging for UP to be able to respond like other property owners because we have these, all these places that are impacted by a number of these trespassers across the board. Notwithstanding the challenges presented by the scale of UP's network in Santa Ana alone, since the beginning of 2018, UP has spent significant financial resources on fencing and cleanup efforts. During this time, UP has completed 78 days of cleanup activity within Santa Ana. Unfortunately, the efforts by UP to date have not prevented the recurrence of the problem. Notwithstanding the almost immediate recurrence of trespassing encampments following UP's cleanup efforts, the city also approached its efforts on UP's right-of-way in the same fashion, now with the same unfortunate result. Also, as UP has previously indicated to the city, UP objects to the city engaging in these types of cleanup activities on UP's right-of-way without coordinating with UP. And the reason I will tell you that is so important, when you get onto the right-of-way, it's extremely important to have protection. It's called flag protection and it means that someone is in communication with dispatching whenever trains are going, moving in that area. And it's a safety requirement of the Federal Railroad Administration. It's important that we have these people present and we can provide that. We just have to be told and we couldn't coordinate that flagging to be on property when these cleanups occur. UP is now working to develop a revised, more comprehensive strategy to respond to encampments on UP right-of-way with the objective of a more permanent improvement on the right-of-way. UP and the city will need to work together if the approach is to be successful. To that end, we would like to meet with the city this month to discuss UP's, what UP proposes and hear the city's willingness to work with UP toward achieving a better outcome for everyone. UP is interested in hearing from the city about the city's further progress on establishing its plan of action to address homelessness within Santa Ana. The city's residents are the persons trespassing on UP right-of-way and causing the various problems, which are a subject of complaints by neighbors and businesses adjacent to the right-of-way, others in the community as well as city staff. When UP or city completes a cleanup effort, very often, either people return within an hour to two hours. I can tell you, I have walked the right-of-way with Judge Carter myself on a rainy day in December and folks came right back. City staff was out there trying to get these people to get into some type of housing situation, temporary. Some people took it, some people did not. If individuals have, obviously, some people were arrested that had outstanding warrants as well. What the city's plan does not address is how the city is dealing with or plans to support the hundreds of Santa Ana residents who are homeless, which is a challenge. It's a concern to all of us. These are persons that continue to trespass on UP's right-of-way and UP, new, more comprehensive strategy will only be successful and meet your expectations if it is informed by the city's plans for these residents.
Lupe, can you conclude pretty soon?
Yes. So, bottom line is, we would like to meet with the city with 30 days. The motion that you have before you, we have some questions about the bill that was submitted to UP and individuals both from Omaha as well as from our Roseville office would like to come to the city to have that discussion with the city.
What I would suggest is let us continue with our action, but our city manager has been in touch with UP.
Correct.
Just go ahead and set up follow-up meetings and you can discuss the bill and everything else. Madam City Manager?
If I may, and thank you, Lupe, for being here.
You're welcome.
We have sent two different proposals to Union Pacific. We've been working with your vice president of risk management.
Correct.
We did get, the last word that we got is you're going to do a pilot program and I would be sent a potential MOU. So, we were waiting for a response from you in regards to not knowing about the dates of the cleanup. It was done under an enforcement action with a warrant, which you were notified of the exact dates that we would be coming onto your property to abate it. So, I'm a little bit confused on maybe the miscommunication, but I would be more than happy to sit down with you.
Yeah, we just have to coordinate that people are safe on the right-of-way. I don't care who the individuals are, I just don't want anyone hurt. And so, that's my purpose for saying that, so we just have to make sure that the communication is there.
And then, Mayor, we do have a very brief staff presentation on this item.
And Mayor, I just, I just want to add to the council, as your city attorney, we will continue to enforce all of our laws that are on the books. We have many people in this city who own thousands of apartments in the city, very difficult to maintain their property. We are treating all property owners the same. If you own property in the city of Santa Ana, we expect you to clean it up and we expect you to respond to-
And by moving forward on the section, that's in essence what we would be doing. But Lupe, be in touch.
We will.
We want to work with you, we want no homeless and all the different, you know, 10 miles that you have.
Right.
I know you have 3,000 throughout California.
Right.
And I bet you there's not any jurisdiction that you're in that you're not having this problem with.
That's correct. At the moment, that is correct. It is all over the West Coast. I have it in Vegas, I have it in Phoenix, I have it in a number of places. This is not just in California, unfortunately. It's very sad, but it is across the board.
Do you have any theory as to what's happening? Are they all moving west and they never did before?
I have a combination of theories because what I tend to see out there is you have mental health issues, you have drug abuse issues.
But we had them before.
But you also now have laws that allow for certain things to happen that before you had more jurisdiction to be able to remove. And those have, those court cases have made an impact on all cities. I just-
So, it's mainly that?
That's a big impact in terms of what your abilities to remove people, that is huge.
Thank you, Lupe, let's be in touch.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
So, with that, anybody else? If not, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it to council for consideration. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion by Iglesias? Second by Mayor Protem Villegas, those in favor, please press green.
Mr. Mayor?
A comment? Go ahead, before you press green.
First, you know, we do appreciate the UP representative being there, but we just feel like everybody needs to do more and I think our city attorney said, we're asking everybody to step up and, you know, we recognize that our PD is largely responsible and able to deal with anti, deal with camping on public property, but on private property, it's really more of a code enforcement thing and we are preparing materials and talking to a variety of businesses, including UP, about your responsibilities. It's my understanding too that I think you have your own police service that's post-certified, so you could also enforce many statutes on your own. There also may be some design things, you know, bigger rocks, different fencing, lighting, music, you know, our community just needs some relief. Finally, I just looked at, you know, your stock earnings, just for the first quarter, 1.9 billion in profit. And again, that's just for one quarter here, 1.4, you know, one in, one in quite a bit. So, the resources are there and it is an issue in some communities, but not all. And so, you know, I trust you can handle it and as some of our council members up here also say, this isn't allowed in Irvine, this isn't allowed in Laguna Niguel, but, you know, your company is allowing this to occur on your property and the community wants you to step it up. Thank you.
So, with that, we have a motion, a second. Those in favor, please press green. Motion carries unanimously, next item, item 75C. Do we have any speakers on this item? Okay, there's a public hearing and I'm going to go ahead and open it up and hear comment. It's basically a cooperative agreement between the city and the county where annexing a 24-acre county island over on East 17th Street right by Tustin and the 55 freeway. So, we have two speakers, Alan Rice and Peter Winningham.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Alan Rice. I live on Pasadena Street. I live on Pasadena Street inside the county island that is being considered for annexation. In the case of the proposal being considered tonight, it is specifically for, according to the county, to facilitate the sewer connections for two proposed fast-food restaurants. The county would like us to be annexed so that the sewers can be connected for fast-food restaurants. Our neighborhood is universally opposed to this annexation. Your own paperwork shows that the community outreach, which was done just about exactly one year ago, there was no support for the annexation proposal at the community outreach. In addition to that, at some point in the past, when this was proposed before, we took a poll of the residents of the single-family houses. Pay attention to this line that says, "I oppose." This is 48 of the 49 houses opposing this. There was one abstention. Not a single person was for it. It seems that this is a fairly draconian measure by the county to have us annexed purely to, well, for the stated goal of streamlining the sewer connections of two fast-food restaurants. I would appreciate if you would not annex us and choose one of the other methods of dealing with this. The state says that you do not have to listen to our objections to this, but it does not require that you do that. You can listen to our objections and choose another method of dealing with the sewer for these two proposed restaurants. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have one more speaker, then let's bring it to council. Peter Whinningham, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Peter Whinningham, appearing tonight on behalf of the Chick-fil-A and In-N-Out who are going to be developing at the corner of 17th and Tustin, a property that has been vacant for more than two decades, and much longer than that, in fact. What you have before you tonight is the product of several months, or many months, of collaboration, negotiations, discussion between your staff, which has done a superb job of representing the city, their counterparts at the county, staff at the local agency formation commissioner, LAFCO. The state has mandated to LAFCOs up and down the state that these small county islands, less than 150 acres, essentially, they advance it with expedienting in every possible opportunity, the annexation of these islands. And so, this is an furtherance of a state directive to LAFCO statewide. Certainly, the city has approached this community with essentially every opportunity to, if they are on septic, that at whatever opportunity that makes sense, to go ahead and connect to the sewer, et cetera, but under no mandate to do so. So, this has been, again, a very collaborative and open process. There was a community meeting, again, approximately a year ago. There was probably 10 folks there from the community who spoke, but everything was done, obviously, in furtherance of the city sunshine ordinance. So, we appreciate certainly your consideration of this evening, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you for being here, Peter.
Thank you.
And thank you for the good work that you do. So, with that, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring it to council for questions and consideration. Councilor David Benyalosa, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a question for the 40, the people representing the 49 homes. What was the reason for the opposition?
Our community sees more connection to the city of Tustin, which we order on one side, than we do the city of Santa Ana, which we order on the other side. We would much prefer to remain independent island, but we would, if we have to go to a city, we'd much rather be part of Tustin, where we're part of Tustin's water, school district, things like that. We do not see ourselves in our, where we're located, to be really part of Santa Ana. And that's why we would like to remain independent, or we'd rather go to Tustin, where we see a much greater alliance.
Isn't there a freeway that separates you with Tustin?
Yes, but there's an, and a.
Let's not have this debate this way. If you want them at the mic, we can do that, but.
We can go back and forth across the freeway many years ago.
All right.
That wasn't, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. So, with that, I would entertain a motion. Councilmember Solario, motion to approve.
I'll second.
There's a second. Those in favor, please press green. So, I believe it'll be five.
It's not working?
Do it again.
Dr. Mabry, can you push the button?
Roll call. Anybody opposed?
Viegas.
So, Viegas is absent, everybody else is in favor. And Viegas is now joining, but it'll be 5-0. So, with that, our next item, 85A, Councilor Iglesias. Oh, you have speakers on this item. Do you want to take speakers first, or do you want me to comment?
No, go ahead and take the speakers.
All right. Alberta Christie. Followed by Gisela Contreras.
Thank you so much. I apologize for.
Make it short, Alberta.
I am. I apologize for the voice. I lost it when I came back from Chicago, believe me, it was not. But anyway, we're 150 years old. We're 150 years old. We formed Orange County, and yet, look at you, look behind you. There is no identification that says, "City of Santa Ana, our seal," or anything, especially "In God We Trust" on this. I'm sorry that when I was on the council, I didn't think of this. But we should be, as a county seat, and during this celebration, we should be proud, number one, to have our name behind this diocese, have our seal behind this diocese, and in addition to that, have the words "In God We Trust." We have it on our money, it's in the halls of Congress, Supreme Court, and cities across this United States. And our laws are based on the community that surrounded our faith base, and informing what is right, truth, and just. On August 3rd, we had the blessing of the city, and many of you were there. And we had the inner faith from every religion, and what did they do? They asked God to bless this city, help us rule it, or help you rule it, have the city be ruled wisely, okay, and have it as a city of love, and one that would be successful in the future. They all mentioned God, and I think that we, as a city, have to acknowledge that we are under God, the supreme being, and guiding our way. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Gisela Contreras, followed by Erlina Oliver.
Hi, good afternoon. Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Gisela Contreras. I'm a 42-year resident of Santa Ana, and I'm just here to urge you and let you know that I support 85A in having an emblem and a display here in our city. Just the fact that before each meeting, we say a prayer that just kind of recognizes, it shows that you recognize how important it is to do that. And the blessing that we just had, you know, to celebrate our 150th anniversary, that is another thing that I think just supports that. So, I highly support that, and I would hope that you do, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Oliver, followed by Melissa Jones, followed by Ann Coyle.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I just want to speak in behalf of having "In God We Trust." It's on our money, and it should be in the council, and especially the city seal in the city council. Should be a big old seal up there. And I just wanted to speak in support of that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Melissa Jones, followed by Ann Coyle.
Hi, my name is Melissa.
Followed by Gail Oliver. Sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. My name is Melissa Jones. I'm here, a pastor at the Salvation Army, and have the pleasure of knowing Ceci and having her on our board. And we want to come here and support this initiative, especially supporting our city seal, and the fact that "In God We Trust" will remain in these chambers. Throughout my, I guess, year or so in Santa Ana as a pastor, I've noticed the strong faith community. I've noticed how much people trust in God, and I know that it will be a great comfort to the people, to the churches, to the other faith communities, to have those words up on, in the city council chambers. And so, we fully support this, and we thank you so much for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ann Coyle, followed by Gail Oliver, followed by Brenda Lepzak.
Good evening. Thank you very much for allowing us to have these public hearings. I've been, I've lived in Santa Ana since 1970. I don't want to count the years, but I've been here a long time, and I'm happy to be a citizen of Santa Ana. Our leaders are, throughout history, have been very clear about the importance of God and the freedoms we have, because our rights come from God. If they don't come from God, who do they come from? Even President Eisenhower said, "The founding fathers, recognizing God as the author of individual rights, declared that the purpose of government is to secure those rights." In many lands, the states claim to be the author of human rights. If the states give rights, it can and inevitably will take those rights away. And I have a book that thick of quotes from presidents, from George Washington to George Bush, all talking about this. And there's another reason that we need reverence for God, and I would like to see the seal, the Santa Ana seal, and "In God We Trust," is because when the framers left the Continental, the Constitutional Convention in 1787, after they had given us the, our Constitution, a woman came up to Benjamin Franklin and said, "Tell me, sir, what have you given us?" And he said, "Ma'am, a republic if you can keep it." And what he meant by keeping it was, you cannot have a free people. You cannot give power to the people if you don't have a virtuous people. And it is through God that we learn virtue and honesty, and all the principles and concepts that have made our, has made our country good. Alex de Tocqueville, a Frenchman, came here and studied America for many years in the early 1800s, because he was curious about why we were the unique country we were. And he said, "There was something about the culture of America, about American shared values. The difference was not their genetic makeup, nor in their drinking water, nor even in their beliefs. It was in their behavior, how they, their beliefs and how they behaved." And he said, "Not until I went into the churches of America and heard her pulpits aflame with righteousness, did I understand the secret of her genius and power. America is great because she is good, and if she ever fails, ceases to be good, she will cease to be great." So, I think we need "In God We Trust" as a memory of those important principles that keep us the wonderful country that we are. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Gail Oliver, followed by Brenda Lepzak, followed by Daniel De León.
All right. Greetings.
Greetings.
Council, councilmen, and Madam City Manager, welcome, amen, and all those who are serving, God bless you, to all my brothers and sisters in Christ. I think it makes every bit of sense to have "In God We Trust." Bible teaches us to love the Lord, that God, with all of our heart, mind, soul, and strength. If God be for us, who can't be against us? And we're talking about blessing Santa Ana. If we truly want to bless Santa Ana, I think this goes right along with it, and first and foremost, we ought to put "In God We Trust," because we ought to be trusting in God, amen. And I've been praying for revival. I believe if we want Santa Ana to be blessed, then we need to do this. And with that, God bless everybody. God bless you.
Thank you, sir. Brenda Lepzak? Is that L-O?
Take a break, huh? Okay. Well, greetings. I'm Brenda Lepzak, and I was born in Santa Ana, attended Santa Ana schools, and I presently teach in Santa Ana Unified School District. I'm also on the Board of Trustees for Orange Unified School District. Concerning posting the national motto, "In God We Trust," in these chambers, this national motto was passed by the 84th Congress and endorsed by President Eisenhower in 1956. All across America, we honor this statement of purpose. Before athletic events, special occasions, and even governmental proceedings, we have invocations that seek the wisdom and justice and blessing of God. We pledge allegiance to a flag that represents one nation under God, and we place "In God We Trust" on our money. In 2006 and in 2011, Senate and House of Representatives reaffirmed "In God We Trust" as the national motto. But what about the judicial system? Doesn't our Constitution contain an Establishment Clause that separates church and state and gives a nonreligious person a right to not be offended by the posting of our national motto in a public building? The answer is no. The Establishment Clause does not prohibit the use or posting of the national motto. In 2018, the Second Circuit Court ruled that the inclusion of "In God We Trust" motto on U.S. currency does not have a religious purpose or advance religion, nor does it place a substantial burden on appellant's religious practices. A century and a half of wise public practice has encouraged us to use this motto, so that the reminder of "In God We Trust" can elevate our capabilities when we discern, deliberate, and decide the significant questions put forth in this great chamber, "In God We Trust."
Thank you very much. Daniel De León, followed by, last speaker is Rosie Avila.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilpeople. I'm so blessed to be able to be here tonight and just address this issue, which is of great importance to me. I am the pastor of Templo Calvario, a church that has been in the community for over 90 years, and I've been the pastor of this church for 43 years. They've asked me, "Why so long?" I says, "Well, I don't know what else to do, so that's why I'm there." But every Sunday morning at Templo Calvario, you will hear this word said, "I bless the city of Santa Ana." We bless this city. We don't want to curse it, we don't want to take anything away from it, we want to bring blessings to this community. If ever we needed this in this council chamber, it's today. I tell you what, America is in crisis, all kinds of problems. What's happening to our cities is shameful. What's going on with the killings is just something that is beyond reasoning, matters that are way beyond us or are part of our community now, and we don't really know how to handle them. I think it would be wonderful if the words "In God We Trust" would be on the wall here somewhere, so as you walk in, members of the chamber, you would be reminded at that point that there is a God that you can go to for wisdom and for guidance. These days, we need wisdom and guidance from God, as if ever we needed it before. So, I'm glad to be able to speak in behalf of it. Even our seal speaks about future. Hey, let's talk about a God that is always there for our future and is always ready to fulfill our dreams. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. Rosie Avila, last speaker.
I thank you for my second chance. The challenges are big in our city, and I think that having the motto would be an asset to the city, and that it really reflects the values of the people in Santa Ana, who are religious people culturally and going to mass all the time. And I, I just want to encourage you to do that. I know there's many cities across California who have already done that, and it's kind of a movement. And the Department of Education, in Orange County Department of Education, has a beautiful sign, "In God We Trust" on it. So, I know a lot of times, decisions are hard and maybe a little controversial, but I don't think you've ever made a decision on the city council that somebody didn't disagree with. So, you just have to do what you feel is right in your heart, and I hope you'll put it. So you just have to do what you feel is right in your heart, and I hope you'll put it up. And I think Santa Ana will be better.
Thank you, Rosie. So with that, I'm going to bring it back to Councilwoman Iglesias.
So I want to thank everyone that came out today to support this. And right now, what I'm asking with this item is to, you know, for us to have a discussion and also to direct our city manager to have discussion with staff on how we can successfully display it here on our city council chambers. I know that when I've attended meetings at other, you know, city councils, they do have their seal and they also have the "In God We Trust" emblem. And so, I'm hoping that with having, you know, a, an installation of those two emblems here, it would be a great opportunity for us to display the pride that we have in our city. Because, you know, we don't have anything back here that has, other than our flag. I see our flag, but we don't have an emblem back here. But, you know, and also, when we start the council chambers, when the council meetings, we always start with, you know, a chaplain or a faith-based leader.
And invocation.
And invocation. So I'm hoping that, you know, the council, my colleagues are supportive so we can direct our city manager to have these discussions to successfully display these emblems.
Madam City Manager, assuming that this is, you know, pretty much unanimous desire, do you have an idea as to how you'd like to proceed?
What I could do is we could study it, because you do have a little bit of challenges in this room, since it's a accordion door behind you. But what we could do is we could do a mock design. We could return back to a future city council meeting with a suggestion on how best to display it and give you some samples of what it would be, and then you could formally direct me by.
Let's do that. Councilwoman Peñalosa, and I've got another suggestion. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilwoman Iglesias, for bringing this item forward. I know I had briefly talked about it when I first got on the council a couple months ago, and I, I know Madam City Manager, you're very familiar with the Anaheim council chambers. And I actually even went and Googled numerous council chambers across the county and, and did realize that there is, the majority do have the city seal, you know, a big seal behind the council members, along with "In God We Trust." So I would like to see that in our council chambers, and I think it's a perfect time, actually, because we are, last month, we did approve that, that upgrade to the technology in here, which I'm excited to see is a millennial, you know, with this 1960's technology that we have current. But, but it's getting upgraded, which is good, and I know there's going to be some work done behind here to accommodate for that technology. So, I mean, it's, it just kind of worked out, and it's a perfect timing to be able to, and I realize what you said about this door, which is weird, but I would like to know the history behind this door, what was the purpose of it? Because that's just interesting. It slides all the way. Mr. Mayor, you were probably here when, when, no? My apologies. But just to see, see it behind us would be nice. So, thank you, Councilwoman Iglesias, and the speakers that came out.
All right. Any other comment? Councilor Solario?
I, I think as we're upgrading various aspects of, you know, the chambers and this really the city hall overall, I think we should look at for a variety of opportunities inside, as well as in the lobby. I know what some institutions do, like what the Rancho Board did, we just had really kind of almost two, what was a historical, various lobby displays, because there's a number of things that were talked about, you know, the seals, you know, the meaning of "God We Trust," but also just, you know, the founding fathers, the Constitution, what democracy is, right? Because, I mean, city hall is kind of democracy in the ground and, on the ground, and we got to keep educating that and instilling those good civic values. And I think, you know, as we're looking at various pieces of, of, you know, these chambers and city halls, it's a good time to do that. But, but I do think it is a delicate thing, and so we just need to, amongst ourselves, talk, but, you know, talk to others externally, see what other cities and institutions are doing, so that we can have some very good upgrades. Thank you.
Thank you. So if no more comment on that, we'll move on to the next item.
I just have one comment, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Madam City Attorney, if you don't mind bringing us back also some research on any potential legal challenges that there are to this, it's obviously, you know, nobody's saying we don't have the ability to practice our faith. Sometimes, though, folks want to do that personally and, and in the privacy of their own, you know, synagogue, church, parish. So, you know, I think that going down this slippery slope, sometimes we expose ourselves to things that, you know, maybe somebody wants to propose a crucifix, maybe somebody wants to propose, you know, the Star of David. So I think we want to make sure that we're careful and that we're on good, solid legal ground. So if you can bring back that legal research in addition to any other information when it comes to logistics and construction, it's just to make an informed decision and make sure we don't invite any, any challenges. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, and then we'll move on.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think if we were going to be legally challenged, it would have challenged our prayer that we have in the, in the beginning, the invocation. And second, we just had the, the blessing of the city just a few weeks ago, and nobody challenged that either, so I think we're going to be okay.
All right, so with that, 85B, please.
Thank you. Thank you all. Okay, and for this one, for the 85B, it's something that, you know, we have been talking as council members and, and, but before I start, I want to thank everyone for being here and thank you for supporting. So the, the homeless issue, you know, it's an issue and a concern that we've had throughout our community. You know, I, I believe as I do, I receive a lot of comments from a lot of community members, as all, all of you guys do, in how to address this homeless issue, how are we going to move forward in addressing and finding a solution? As we had today at, you know, 75B with the railroads, you know, there's issues that really are community-driven and to find solutions. So with this, I mean, what I'm asking is for the city manager to explore the formation of an advisory group of residents, nonprofits, Chamber of Commerce, and maybe others to help advise in our efforts in addressing the homeless. So the city manager can, you know, you can return to us with recommended options and best approach for this type of advisory body for our consideration. Because I, you know, when I was on the school board, we had the same thing with our superintendent. We had her parent input. She would meet with our, with our parents, because they're the ones that would help address any concerns or issues that were going on in our schools. So the same thing would, I would, you know, ask of you is, you know, for the businesses, the churches, whoever it is that are going to be meeting with you, what are possible solutions that we can work on together? And then this way, the community seems that they have a connection with the city and also with you, you know, because you're fairly new to our city. And then sometimes it's like, you know, we don't know the city manager, we don't know what she's about, is she really listening to us? And informing this, I believe it also will put you in a place that you're having that genuine community engagement in addressing the biggest obstacle, I mean, the biggest challenge that we have within our city, which is the homeless issue. So I would ask our colleagues if we could start that common advisory with our city manager.
Any thoughts from the city manager?
Certainly. So I've done this in the city of Anaheim and also in the city of Laguna Niguel. In Anaheim, we did a very large homeless task force that we started, and it was mainly with nonprofits and churches, and it was to really help seek their advice, but also for them to pool their resources so we could have a greater impact. In Laguna Niguel, I believe it's probably more similar to what Councilmember Iglesias is talking about. I did convene just a small gathering of key stakeholders on this topic, and they served as an advisory to me. It was not something that was appointed by the, the city council, not a Brown Act Committee or like that. It was just some input from individuals that had some innovative solutions that I could incorporate.
So we'll just follow your lead and keep us posted.
Okay.
Thank you. With that, now we're going to, any other public comment?
No comment cards.
I'm not talking about the Housing Authority.
No.
All right. All right.
That meeting's canceled tonight.
So with that, any council, well, city manager report?
Just very briefly, you know, it's our sesquicentennial and our 150th anniversary, so we have a lot of celebrations happening, so I just want to remind everybody about the Mariachi Festival on Saturday, September 7th, from 2:00 to 10:00. It's a free community event. And then we also have Fiesta's Patrias coming up, which is September 14th and 15th, which is a, a very popular event. And is Councilmember Peñalosa going to correct how I said that, that word? And then we have another very unique opportunity in celebration of our 150th anniversary. We're going to be giving away 150 trees. If residents are interested in it, they can go to our website and register, and they would need to register by October 25th. And Daisy just put up on the screen the information.
Thank you. With that, let's go to Councilmember Jose Solario, please.
Thank you. You know, the mayor often goes to me first so that my list doesn't get longer, so I at least try to be a little thoughtful. You know, I just want to bring up one, one thing today, and that is, I know that our city manager is working with PD and staff on a homelessness strategy, because we have a, an old one, that we did some stuff, then do other stuff. Think we need something a little bit more pragmatic and something more meaningful, but we're in a crisis. You know, time is of the essence, so, you know, I'm hopeful that however you decide to roll out that plan or draft plan, that it happens soon, because, you know, the community gets continuously frustrated. We're seeing folks come in from other cities now that they're doing enforcement and, or they're reading articles like in San Clemente, where they're taking very aggressive actions to say, "Hey, if you don't live in our city, you got to leave." And we get asked, "Why aren't we doing that?" Or, "Why aren't we doing something?" And we do have a few things in the works, like the park security program. I know we're trying new things with the quality of life team, but just the order and the magnitude is not sufficient. But it, but it starts with at least having a new game plan so we could see what it is, how to provide resources to it, how to expand it, how to, you know, be comfortable with it, how to share it with the community, which was talked about earlier, but the community's hungry for this and we need to have it soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman David Peñalosa, please.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor Peñalosa. Just wanted to, you know, you know, thank, thank staff as always for, for all the work you guys are doing. Can't thank you enough. And I do also want to say that, that the Memorial Park Pool Party on Saturday was, was very successful, it was very fun. So thank the Parks and Rec staff for, for helping putting that together, and Daisy as well, and, and everybody working towards 150th celebrations. It was a very successful event, a lot of smiling faces, and couldn't have asked for a better turnout. Wanted to also thank the Chief of Police, Chief Valentine, for the, his, his leadership and effort in, in pushing and hiring officers. Last week, we, I was able to attend the swearing-in ceremony for six new officers joining our police department, which is always great to see. And wanted to thank the Public Works Department as well. Just last week, I was, went on excursion with them to do some, some routine maintenance on the water tower and climbed to the very top. I'm still sore, but it was, it was a great experience and looked at a lot of the, the wear and tear that, that is needed, the repairs that are needed, and just pretty much that whole operations of the water department was, was very nice to see. So thank you for that. And with that said, I want to just wish everyone a good night.
Thank you for that. Councilwoman Iglesias, please.
Okay, so I just, I just want to ask, moving along with what we're talking about, the homeless, yesterday, a, a concerned resident sent me a picture about, you know, a bus, I guess, letting off individuals out in our, close to our civic center area. So are we, as, I guess, as a city and also as a department, are we monitoring, like, those buses that are shuttling in our, you know, shuttling in people that are not really our residents, but managed to be dropped off here and then continue to live here? So is there a plan that we have in, in making sure that that doesn't happen? So what I'm asking is if, you know, with, with our police department, if our city manager, we can work together to see how we could address that issue moving forward, because it's very concerning when we have that type of activity and, you know, more and more individuals are being dropped off in our, especially in our civic center area.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Are you speaking to jail releases, or are you speaking to people transparted homeless into the?
You know, the buses. Actually, I'll, I'll share with you the picture. It just says "special" on the front, and then this is a white bus with nothing, but individuals are getting off, and they seem like individuals who are here to stay, but without a place to live. So if we can, if we can look into that, I would really appreciate it. Also, I, I want to just thank staff for, you know, moving along the 150 years of celebration, even though I wasn't able to attend the one in, you know, at Memorial Park. What I saw from the pictures and the videos, you guys did an amazing job, so thank you for moving that forward. And also, I just wanted to say, I attended the Santa Anita Movie Night on Friday, and I don't know if you all are aware, you know, but the, the leader of that neighborhood association, Felipe, he, he is, his granddaughter passed away in a senseless, yeah, senseless way. So I'm hoping as a city, we could send, you know, Felipe something, because he, you know, he was acknowledged for having like the best neighborhood assoc, neighborhood plan, you know, even throughout the, the state. And if we could acknowledge him, you know, providing him something from the city, maybe sending him flowers or something, some type of acknowledgement, because it was a big loss with his granddaughter. And so, and I, and I know, and I've already asked also the mayor if we could close this meeting also. We had another loss in, in Ward 6, which was the passing away of Pat McWigan. She was our former council member here in, in Santa Ana for Ward 6, so if we could.
I'll, I'll be honored to do so.
Okay, thank you. And so, thank you all, and have a great week.
Thank you. Councilor Vince Armento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to say a few words about Pat McWigan. I know that, you know, we knew her well, and I think she served here for a number of years and carried herself well, but I think most significantly, she was the first woman elected here to this council, so it was a very significant step. She was somebody who served with a lot of pride in the city, and she's now with her son, Steve, who passed away as well. And Steve was a really, really strong advocate on behalf of the zoo. So to the extent that they're now both together, you know, we send our best to the, at least I send my best to the McWigan family. The other thing on the homelessness issue, is there a way to track folks that are brought in here to public agencies or social service departments that when they're brought by other cities, that there's some way to make sure that they go back to the city of origin? So maybe we partner with some of the, you know, social service network agencies that provide those services to them and see how we can find out if somebody's brought, let's say from Irvine, Costa Mesa, they come in for some public assistance, that they somehow return, and it should be done by the city of origin, if that's possible. So to the extent that's something that we can do, I know we looked at that when it came to jail releases, folks that, you know, we have a lot of different jails, like at the Music Facility, Lamro and Orange, and a lot of them are sent to Men Central in Santa Ana, transported from those sites, even though they're picked up in other parts of the county, and then they're released into Santa Ana. So I don't know if there's ever been some partnership with the county or the sheriff's office to try to see how we can try to track them a little bit better. So those are my comments. Have a good night.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first skate park that was put in Santa Ana was at Centennial Park, and I'm told that it was Alberta Christie and, and Pat McWigan, who took that on and recommended it. And so, I was thinking that maybe we could name the skate park after her, and if we can bring that up at the next council meeting, that would, that would be great. That's just another idea where we can honor her, naming something after her would be great. But she was involved in this project, and I just had staff check with Ron Ono, our local historian, been here for so long, and, and we confirmed that. So thank you, everyone, for considering that, and thank you, Madam City Manager, for your help.
Councilwoman Jose Solario?
Yeah, I didn't want to say that. That would be, you know, very appropriate. I was here when we were working on the skate park, and she invested a lot of time into it, you know, generationally, it was fun, you know, seeing her, you know, interact with the, with the young ones and the skaters. And sometimes with some opposition, you know, there's some folks that always have their own opinions upon what should happen there at Centennial Park. that always have their own opinions upon what should happen there at Centennial Park and other, and she really stepped up in a meaningful way. And I think that would be worthy of the noble person that she was.
I would concurrent agree with all those comments about Pat. And let me add a few more of my own. And that is that, you know, she was a very, very giving individual. Those of us that had the opportunity to serve with her, you know, she really took this on, you know, in a different way. She'd keep all the council agendas for years at home, every single piece of paper you can imagine. Of course, this was much before the internet and all this. For the millennials, I know you don't remember those days. But she was tremendous. She was really, really good as a historian. And on the skate park, the only thing I'm sorry about is that we haven't been able to do another one. You know, a lot of time has passed since Pat was leading those efforts.
Mariposa Park has a small skate park in it. Took us a while.
Yeah, but, you know, we need, we need, look how busy that place is. And over the years, you know, I mean, you know, she really went out and researched a little bit. And remember, she was, I don't know, in her 70s when she was doing this research? And so a lot of, a lot of kudos, a lot of credit to Pat. And also to her husband, Jim McQuiggan, who gave a lot to the city as well. I know, you know, the, more recently, people knew Steve, but prior to that, Jim was really her anchor and really very much part of this city and this council and the efforts. He was an attorney, and he spent a lot of time with our then-city attorney, Ed Cooper, and, you know, tracked things and was an advisor to Pat. And also, I would always have to thank and thank fondly of Pat, because when I first got introduced to the city, she was on the city council, and she was part of the group that voted to save the muffler shop. For some of you, you may not remember, but we had a big battle here in the city over a smuffler. And at first, it was just John Acosta and Bob Luxenberger, and we didn't know where a third vote would come from. And then Pat became that third vote. And of course, you needed five to condemn. So at that point, we wouldn't have the muffler shop condemned. And I'll always remember Pat for, you know, her decision to be supportive of me and the family and all that many, many years ago, before I was on the city council. And then, of course, I want to make sure that we get, you know, basically flowers and a resolution and maybe a copy of this meeting. Right now, as it's ending and we're all talking about Pat, I believe she has three children that are surviving her. I know one in particular well, Michelle, because Michelle, for a while, dated a guy named Rick Norton, which some of you may remember, some may not even remember Rick Norton. But he used to be an operator of a swap meet here in town back in the 80s, early 90s. That became a huge controversial issue. And then Rick decided to run for city council. He ran for city council. He got elected, and then he began to date Pat McQuiggan's daughter, Michelle. And that really caused her a lot of concern, because he'd call her, "Hey, you know, how you doing, you know, my mother-in-law?" And they, "Wait a minute, wait a minute," you know? So, so poor Pat. She, she, she really, really gave a lot for a long, long time. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.